This meeting is being recorded. The recording will be posted on the N L S D Media YouTube channel. All votes this evening will be roll call votes. A reminder to all school board members that if you are making a motion, please state your name before you do so. And those who are second, also, please say your name because we need to have accurate records here. We have the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, may we have roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. Distler.
He's here.
Mr. Green.
Here, sorry about that.
It's okay. Ms. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Husack, here. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
Here.
Ms. Culp?
Here.
Ms. Martinell?
Here.
Mr. Fedorchak?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Public comments will be restricted to the agenda. We'll be waiting till after the meeting, though, to see with Mr. Hill if there is anybody who would like to be addressed by or address the board. Moving on, we will now move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Link.
Thank you, Mr. Fedorchak. This evening, I'm going to cede my time to Mr. Geist, and he is going to present to us the Northernly High Sports Resocialization Plan. This is a plan required by the Department of Education, which must be approved by the school board and then posted on our website to allow our sports, sports activities to begin here in the district again. So with that being said, I'm going to share my screen and share the presentation, and Mr. Geist will take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Thank you, Mr. Go ahead, man. Yep.
Can you see my, can you see my screen now, Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Okay, you tell me when to advance.
Mr. Link emailed you the 25-page paper that we'll post on the website. That is the, all the nuts and bolts. I just want to kind of review where the rubber meets the road type of document with you, and here's how we're going to implement that plan that you were, you were able to see. The second slide you can see there on Mr. Link's screen, this is going to be our site plan. We are going to use Bulldog Stadium as our main area. That's where we're going to restrict all our athletes. We're going to use the north gate, as you can see, towards the top where we have ATCs. That's where our athletic trainers are going to be. We're going to be able to social distance our athletes on the pavement as well as when our students come in, you'll see on the bottom right, the QR code boards in which the athletes will be able to get their smart device, their smartphones, and be able to pull up the survey, and I'll be able to cover that as we go through, just so everybody kind of has an idea. We'll have a teaching station where the high jump pit is. We'll open up just the bathrooms for one at a time entry, and anytime we have a crossover, we'll be using social distancing in the home bleachers with coaching supervision to keep the athletes apart. Our athletic trainers will be evaluating at the north gate main entrance. So that'll be, that'll be our main area. Since we have an eight-to-nine-foot fence, that'll be our only point in which athletes will check in. Please stop me if anyone has any questions. So looking at Bulldog Stadium, as Mr. Link pulls that up, again, all the athletes will report there. There's the QR codes that'll be on board, similar to what you see is our, through our drive-through line. And what those QR, their, their squares in which athletes will take their camera, they'll point it at that QR square, and it'll bring it up to a, an evaluation form. And at that particular point, all of our athletes will self-evaluate, and that will be tracked by our athletic trainers to make sure all of our athletes are healthy coming in. Once they come in, they will be scanned with thermal scanners to see if they have any particular high-grade temperature, and we'll cover that a little bit later on. The athletic trainers, we're going to grant them access to the field house one week prior to prepare for this plan, and our support staff is going to do some intensive cleaning of our facilities, especially the accessible bathrooms in which our athletes will be using. We are not going to start with the weight room at this point. We're going to evaluate the plan, see how it goes, and then implement something in August. Okay, moving on, our athletic teams, these workouts are voluntary. They are not mandatory. Only one team will be permitted on the turf at one time, and as soon as the workouts are done, they must vacate the stadium. Teams checking in must report at least 15 minutes, so we don't have any crossovers. Again, those teams that are coming in will be stationed in the home bleachers until the turf has been cleared, and our coaches will supervise that. Moving on in regards to our athletes, we are going to encourage them to bring two gallons of water. This is a recommendation from the Department of Health that everyone brings their own drinks. So we are encouraging all of our athletes to bring two gallons of water. And as I mentioned before, all of our athletes will conduct or complete a health survey via those QR codes that we'll have posted, and that will be done every day. Our athletic trainers will then submit what temperature they get on the readings from the thermal scanners, and we will also provide social distancing for our athletes coming in. We are also letting our athletes know not to report to the stadium if they're sick in any way. And at the conclusion, as previously stated, there will be, they need to immediately leave the stadium upon the end of their workout. The way the screening is going to take place, again, using those QR codes, they're going to be asked a series of questions, and what we can do is, Mr. Link, a little bit after the presentation, if you want to pull up the evaluation at the end and the QR code, if that's possible, we can show what those questions look like.
Sure.
Go ahead. Oh, I thought I had a question. All right, athletes and coaches will complete the self-evaluation. They'll use their electronic device. The athletic trainers, again, will use those thermal scanners to check the athletes, and they will then log those temperatures onto their end of the survey. And then if, if an athlete, since we are, we are summer, and some of the athletes may be running behind, they sometimes can run a little bit higher with the skin temperature. We will have an appeal process and use an oral thermometer for any athlete that's showing an abnormally high temperature and no other visible symptoms of illness. So we have an appeal process there, and then if the athlete does look ill and has an abnormally high temperature, either or, or both, we will then seat them outside the stadium, will not grant them entrance to the stadium. We will then have them contact their parents for pickup, and then the communication chain will be activated, and you'll see how the communication chain works from there. If we do learn of a knowledge of a positive C-19 test, please note that the workouts are going to be Monday through Thursday, so we are going to be in session four days throughout, throughout the summer. If an athlete or parent contacts the school district, whether it's an athletic trainer, a head coach, myself, Mr. Link, or any of our principals or administrative staff, we're going to start the communication chain, we are going to cancel that particular team for three workdays. So if it happens on a Tuesday, we'll cancel them Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, and they can resume on Tuesday. So more or less, an entire week will be shut down for that particular team, and again, the communication chain will be activated. The way the communication chain will work, and that's on the last, last slide there, the athletic trainers, again, depending on what happens, but the athletic trainers will contact me or, or whoever I designate could be one of the principals. From there, I will contact Mr. Link and the head coach of each respective team. Superintendent, Mr. Link will contact the entire school board as well as the entire administration. Head coaches will contact athletes and the parents of the respective team in which that occurred. So we wanted to make sure that we get all the information out there. We don't want to violate any HIPAA, any, any type of HIPAA issues in regards to names and who it might be, but we, we will notify if there's any particular thing that comes up through the month of July and August and moving forward. So if, Mr. Link, if you'd be able to pull up that, what that QR code will look like and then survey, and then we can open it up to any questions. Okay, that's what the, the QR code's going to look like. We'll have that laminated posted on boards throughout the stadium lot. Athletes will either be able to drive up, walk up, ride their bicycle up, take a picture of that, that then goes to their browser and their smart device, and then you'll be able to see the survey that Mr. Link's going to show you.
Mr. Geist, this is Michelle Martinell. I do have a question. What if some of our athletes don't have a smartphone?
Yep, we have, we have an athletics iPad that we will clean after every use. They'll be able to use that iPad to access all these questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. As you can see there, and, and again, each athlete must complete this every time they arrive to the stadium. They have to put their name, the date, and then the particular sport that they're going to be participating in for the day. And then they have the list of common symptoms associated with C-19. They checkmark any of the ones that they feel they might have, or they checkmark, I am not experienced, I'm experiencing none of these. And then at that particular point, there'll be another question if they've been around anybody with C-19. And then at that particular point, once they've completed that, they hit the okay, they then move up to our athletic trainers at the north gate. That last part that's, that's listed there in the survey is just a placeholder for athletic trainers to submit a temperature, and then those athletes, again, under HIPAA, HIPAA conditions, our athletic trainers, being our medical staff, will be able to monitor any particular symptoms and/or causes of what's going on in regards to C-19. And at this point, I'll take any questions of the particular plan. Again, this is just a brief overview. I know you've been able to, to read the 25 pages of the overall plan that we'll post on the website, but again, just wanted to more or less give you where the rubber meets the road and how this plan is going to be implemented.
Hi, Mr. Geist, this is Gail. Thank you for putting the plan together. You know, many sports, sports being from my past, so of course I have a lot of questions. So there's a couple of questions. One, in regards to, I noticed you mentioned that we're keeping all our athletes within the confines of the stadium. How are we handling cross-country in that?
Cross-country will check in at the stadium, and they naturally social distance when they go on their runs. So they are going to check in and check out at the stadium.
Okay, so they won't be confined to the stadium like the procedure says?
Correct, correct. That's, that's for all of our team, all of our team sports.
Okay, then I noticed there was also a list of phases, phase one, two, and three for different options. How does it, how do we move from phase one to two to three, and who's controlling that, and what parameters are around those changes?
Most of those are controlled by the Department of Health and PDE in regards to the green, yellow, red phase. As long as we maintain the green phase and our state government doesn't make any changes, we will be able to maintain what we currently are doing and increase the ability of, of interaction of our athletes. So in other words, we have it, we're, we're taking it slowly and moving it in to see how our athletes are going to be able to handle this, to make sure that we have systems in place. And once the particular practices start in mid-August, we'll see how the depend, how the Department of Health is giving some instruction in regard to all of our athletes, but we, we have at this point, we, we could start with full practices in two weeks if we had to under this particular plan. We're not going to, but we are set, ready to go for August 17th because of the plan that you see in those 25 pages.
What phase are we starting at? So July 1st, you're planning that practices can start. By then, the anticipation is that Lehigh County and Northampton County will be green. So what phase would our athletes start at?
We're, we're going to start in the first phase, just nice and easy, and then we can easily move up to phase two and phase three how we go. But this one here, this is ultimately, we're restricting all our athletes to outside. We are going to keep less than, less than 50, which is football. So I mean, they're kind of phase two with the green, and we're okay with that, but we're going to maintain just workouts at this particular point. So there's not going to be anybody within a six-foot radius of each other because these are going to be conditioning workouts. We're not using the weight room. We're not using any of the indoor facilities other than the bathroom, and we're encouraging healthy habits, and we're going to start off on the first day with our athletic trainers giving healthy interpersonal or personal care techniques. If you recall, a number of years ago, we had some issues with some of our female athletes sharing a razor, and we came down with a particular illness. So we're going to educate our athletes. We're going to educate our coaches, and we're going to continue to move forward, anticipating that we're going to be in full green, that we can actually have a normal practice outside in mid-August.
And those practices would have to stay social distancing six feet. So, so sports like soccer and football in the fall would not be able to do, for instance, scrimmaging or blocking or using any of those types of equipment? Like for the football team in particular, their things that they use, I'm forgetting me.
But that's all right. From, from everything we're seeing is those will be allowed, all those practices will be allowed because of the amount of time that has to be spent within a six-foot distance of each other. I'm just kind of following what the Department of Health has given us, but all those particular sports, they're naming football and wrestling, not that we're going to be wrestling right away, but they're naming those as high-risk sports. Not that they're restricting those sports, but they're saying they're higher risk, where soccer is a medium risk and cross-country is a lower risk. Does that, does that help you out?
It does. So I guess we're treating them all kind of the same and putting them into areas. I guess I'm going by, I'm looking at the, unfortunately, I'm reading the news, which is good and bad, I guess, for, for today's world, but there, there's been a lot of, of cases in particular to baseball and football and some of these other places that are, that are showing spikes in, in COVID for specific teams. And I'm just trying to understand how we're putting this into play even before our education plan and what our education plan comes and looks like come August, September, when we start school. How, how I'm able to compare how these student athletes are going to go out there, and we're going to keep them safe.
Well, that's how we're starting off slow. That's why we're just going to keep them conditioning, keep them as social distance, and continue to evaluate and get reports. As you've seen, and, and I try to follow what we're getting from our, from our government officials, there's been a number of things that have changed over the last three months, and we're hoping that we get more and more information, and we are going to apply that information that we're given and continue to keep all of our athletes safe. But we're also, you know, there, there's more than one thing that we have to, to keep in mind, and we, we would be doing a disservice to our athletes if we put them out in the field August 17th, and they are not conditioned to go, especially any type of heat acclimatization as well as physical fitness, and, and trying to play four quarters of football, two halves of soccer, two halves of field hockey, 3.1 miles in cross-country is not ideal to have them start in the middle of August when everybody else is, is more or less going to be conditioning and doing the same thing.
Brian, this is Bob. Um, I have just a question about equipment. Um, you know, certain equipment is being used, obviously, in a different sport. Is there going to be any sanitizing or any type of attention given to, to those types of equipment?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, Bob. Thanks for the question. In regards to, I'll start out with football. When we get into August, Coach Taut's not going to be using any, any particular football equipment early on. Again, this is more or less Coach Taut's not going to be using any, any particular football equipment early on. Again, this is more or less teaching and, and also conditioning. But as we move closer, we have a, we have a great history of tradition of cleaning our equipment after practices. We are going to emphasize that with our athletic trainers. Again, we are going to continue to educate all of our athletes and prevent all types of different communicable diseases in regards to soccer balls and field hockey balls. We are going to have our athletic trainers, myself, we're going to have all the coaches clean that particular equipment after practice, and then we are encouraging all of our athletes to wash their hands after practice so that they can go home and, and feel safe after particular practice.
Second question, at what point do you see us utilizing the weight room again?
Our, our hope is that we're going to start in August. We want to try to evaluate, see how July goes, see if we have any issues, evaluate the process. And then once we move into the weight room, I'll inform Mr. Link and then also Mr. Dur so that we can continue to make sure we do some intensive cleaning in the weight room.
And lastly, I just want to thank you for putting this together. I know it was short notice. You know, when the state came out with the permission for athletic teams to begin, you know, obviously, we needed a plan. I did reach out right away when I was reading it, and I know it was a short turnaround, so I do appreciate the time you put into the document. I read the entire thing, and I, and I feel pretty comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for the kind words, Mr. Kern. It, it was a very short turnaround, and I, I have to thank St. Luke's University Health Network, our proud partners. They were very instrumental in this plan. They put it through all the different paces in St. Luke's, all the different particular, I would be the right word, areas of, of employment at St. Luke's, from their epidemiologists to their sports medicine to just their general care doctors. So they, they ran it through all the paces. And I'd also like to thank all the administration for Mr. Link and, and so forth, as well as Mr. Dur's going to have to put a lot of work together to also to maintain the cleanliness. So I'd like to thank all the administration in that, in that particular aspect.
I do have one, one final thought here. You know, you mentioned wrestling and, and obviously, this isn't their season, but I, being a former wrestling coach, we wrestled year-round. I'm sure basketball, you know, they could go off-campus and meet at a playground, essentially, and you know, a coach could be there with kids. I, I'm kind of, I don't know, what, what would be, as a district employee, you know, and, and under our guidelines as a coach, doing something off-season, what are we in particular going to do about those types of things?
Well, for, for wrestling and basketball, we're going to evaluate in August to see if we, especially when school kicks back in, see how school's going. I'll also, I, I feel 99.999% confident that our coaches have not met or not going to meet unless I give them authorization, in which I get authorization from Mr. Link. So at this particular point, I'm, I'm confident because those softball didn't meet, track and field didn't meet, baseball didn't meet. I know wrestling, they were chomping at the bit, but they, they could not come in, and basketball has not met, so I, I feel pretty confident that those teams will not meet until we give them the go-ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Geist, this is, this is Martino again. I was just, I needed a clarification, so all of the disinfectants and, and things like that and any PP involved, the district is providing that, correct?
Yes, yep, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Fedorch, I would just like to speak to Mrs. Martino's question as well. We spent a considerable amount of time this morning dedicating the necessary PPE allocations to our PCCD Health and Safety Grant through COVID-19. So we, we've actually either started to order them. Some of the things we've already began, began to order, some of them are on the list, and they're all being written and submitted by the, to the grant no later than June 30th. So we're, we're getting, sure, so I guess my point is we're getting those additional items through the grant and not through our general operating fund.
Any other questions?
And just to confirm, Mr. Geist, in between, this is Gail again, in between practices, the bathrooms, are they going to be cleaned since we're asking athletes to wash their hands before they leave? So is that part of the plan?
I'll, I'll have to check with Mr. Dur, but at this particular point, you know, we're, we're encouraging the athletes to wash their hands, but I'll have to check in with Mr. Dur if that's going to be a particular part of the plan. But we are encouraging our athletes and restricting them one at a time in the bathroom.
And somebody's controlling that?
Yeah, the coach, we have coaches and the athletic trainers will be stationed there as well.
Perfect.
So
Sure.
This is Husak. We spoke a lot about kind of the command hierarchy from where out there on, on the stadium complex to make sure that there's always a point person and then a secondary, a succession plan, basically, for if a student were to challenge a decision or not, basically not want to follow the protocols that we have people monitoring for that. By no means do we want to turn this into any sort of disciplinary type of thing, but it is definitely an enforcement type of thing. Additionally, the cleaning of the bathrooms, one way that we're looking at doing those is, is to do it effectively and efficiently, and that's where some of those hand pump sprayers will come into place. We know that we have the Quad Disinfectant. Right now, we have to, we have to schedule our custodians to go in there at the, at the team changes to spray down in between, much like we plan on doing with school buses.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Geist, Mr. Disler, who is on chat because he cannot speak right now through his microphone, is stating that there's a great, you did a great job in setting this up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Disler. I appreciate that. And again, it was, it was a team effort. And I'd like to thank everybody in regards to St. Luke's and as well as administration. So again, it was a complete team effort in this.
Okay, and thank you too. I, we appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Link? Back to you.
Mr. Fedorch, that concludes my update for this evening. And this, this item will come, come back again during the new business section for a vote by the school board.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir. I see that, I believe, Mr. Keegan, you are on now? Mr. Keegan?
Eric, do we know who the two phone numbers are that are on there?
It doesn't show me the entire number, but it's an area code 610, and it ends with 21. If it, if Mr. Keegan, if you're on, if you can press star 6 to unmute yourself, so we can hear you.
Mr. Fedorch, the other one is Jens Domgard from our Bond Council on for if the case there's any questions about the refinancing.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I just assumed one was Mr. Keegan, but maybe not. Okay, then we'll move on. I do want to make note that we did have an executive session held at 6:45 virtually through via Google Meet. Moving on with our agenda then. I will now move into the personnel. We have one personnel item. I will, I will ask for a motion to approve.
Michelle Martino, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Matt Green, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
We do a roll call.
Roll call, Mr. Fedorch.
Take it back, I'm sorry. Michelle, yeah, never mind. Gail, roll call, please.
Mr. Disler?
Mr. Disler, please chat with me.
Thank you, Mr. Disler. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Husak? Yes. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Culp?
That may have been.
Ms. Culp?
Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorch?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to new business item. We have one business item, and that is the athletic proposal. Do I have a motion to approve the new business item?
Donna Culp, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Bob Kern, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Green? Mr. Green?
One more try, yes.
Ms. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Husak? Yes. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Ms. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Disler?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorch?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the financial. I will accept the motion to approve the financial items A through K. A through K. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Green, so moves.
Mr. Disler seconds that?
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Husak? Yes. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Ms. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Disler?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorch?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to the budget discussion. We, we have received the budget. We had passed a tentative budget. We have had a meeting after that to discuss the budget. A number of things were presented to us through those sessions. We are at the point now that we, I would be looking for a motion to approve the budget numbers. On your screen right now, you do see the board considerations, and I'm going to let Mr. Link just kind of talk through that a minute, but I will, or, or Sherry, whichever one, and then I will pick it back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fedorch. So I'm sharing on the screen with you the slide shared at the last board meeting and previously at the finance committee meeting. So again, here were the previous board considerations, and for the first three, the board supported moving forward with, with those three, which is the bond refinance, renegotiating the transportation contract, and eliminating two positions through attrition. So we built our proposed budget up to this point as if those, those are going to be accepted by the school board. And then the last consideration was the tax increase. So the next slide here is the projected shortfall. If we do the first three items, the projected shortfall is $417,000. And then we broke down for the school board to consider different incremental tax increases. And then the revenue generated by each of those tax increases. And then we broke it down by county, taking into consideration that the stat, the state tax equalization board would have to, to make their adjustments because we're dual county district, Lehigh and Northampton County. And then we had the numbers there for what that would mean in Lehigh County and in Northampton County on the median assessed value home in each of those counties, which is what is shown on the screen there for you. So at this point, I'll turn it back to Mr. Fedorch to open it up for discussion as to, you know, the direction the school board would like to go to get to a motion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, is there any other information that a board member needs at this point to prepare to make a motion to accept the three items and to set a percentage? I will look for a motion to do so. And along with a percentage, do I have one?
Okay, I'll do it. After much consideration and review, and those of you who've been reading emails know that I've been a pain in the you-know-what requesting all kind of information from Matt and Sherry and Rhonda, et cetera. I've spent a lot of time going over it, and the more I keep going over it, with the $2 million savings in the bond, which I think we've all agreed we're going to do, we're taking very little out of the, out of the budgetary reserve to balance the budget. And I believe in all honesty that this year's budget will come in probably a million dollars under, that's a guesstimate, maybe it'll be 800,000, maybe it'll be a million, two, there's still things that aren't wrapped up. With that in mind, Mr. Fedorch, and, and I'll let Sherry fill in the numbers, I would move that we approve a budget with a 0% increase.
Hi, it's Michelle Heckman. I would just like to weigh in based on the changes that were made, the three, you know, changes that were made on the previous slide. In the first version of the budget, you know, I think a tax increase was necessary. Now that these changes have been made, I agree. You know, with Mr. Green, I think moving forward with a 0% increase for this year, you know, it's both responsible and makes sense for the community.
Are you seconding that?
I am, I am.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
I have, this is Bob Kern. I have a quick question. With the equalization tax between counties, what, at a 0% increase on the budget, what would taxes go up anyway in Lehigh County?
Taxes in Lehigh County at a 0 mil increase would still go up $43 a person with the median assessed value of 149,000. And Lehigh, and Northampton County's taxes, they will see a $62 reduction compared to what they paid last year.
So $43 is what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? The only thing I need to ask, Sherry, one of the things that always concerns me when we do, when we do a zero, what will that do to us next year as far as our, our level?
Yeah, it, as always, Gary, it takes the money off the table where you can't, that's no money that you're ever going to recoup going forward. So that money is gone. You're never going to get that money back.
So we, we, we could be losing a fair amount, or I, I mean, I, I don't know, but we, we could be losing, it's never gotten back.
Correct, and it's that money every year. So if you don't build a tax increase this year, let's just even say, whatever, I'm, I'm going three and a half. I know you're never going to go for that. But you've lost, you know, the, the $300 and some thousand dollars, and you're going to lose that next year and the year after, and the year after that, and the year after that. That's gone. You can never recoup that money. It's gone.
Right. And the other question I have is basically, and I think I know that answer, but our, our bonds, which we're approving in this, in this motion or any of the motions, then we'll come to, we're going to have to pay them back, which then will put us to approximately 300,000 in the third year?
We, we are forgiven $2 million this year, $2 million in, in 2021. 2022, we also won't have to pay the $2 million, but when you get to 2223, that $2 million comes back on the books. So that's basically, at that point in time, you're going to have to realize, where are we going to come up with $2 million? We've taken it off for these two years, but you're going to have to find that money again in two years.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Disler, I would just, I'm sorry, Mr. Fedorch, I would just like to note that Mr. Disler added to the chat that he made a motion to, to Mr. Disler added to the chat that he made a motion to, to, um, to accept first three and then a 2.5% increase. Uh, I believe Mr. Green's motion came first, so we'll need to receive the second. So we'll need to work through Mr. Green's motion first. Um, but I just wanted to note that Mr. Disler did comment in the chat.
Okay. And we do have, we, the reason why I'm going into discussion, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Heckman did second that.
Correct.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion people?
I, I, I just want to comment on, on Sheri's discussion and I, and I fully understand the fact that if we don't raise the taxes this year, that money's lost next year and, and it kind of builds up after that. Uh, the point I would make though is if our budget comes in a million under this year, that's a million going back into fund balance. And if the same thing happens next year under similar conditions, that's another million going back. So that's going to give us some money to kind of replenish our fund balance. And, and then when we look to put the money back, our fund balance is going to be a little bit healthier. Uh, does that mean six, eight years down the road, we might be in trouble? I, I don't even know who is going to be here six or eight years down the road or what things are going to be like. I know we have a crisis now and I think we can get through it this year, next year, and two or three years after that without a whole lot of problem. You know, I could spend a half hour here going through statistics. I don't want to bore anybody with that. But, but, uh, I agree with Sheri, it's money we lose, but I, I think, I think it's something that we need to do for our taxpayers and I, and I think we can do it in northern Lehigh. And now I'll keep quiet.
Sheri, Sheri, this is Gail.
Yes.
Just a question. So can you just help me understand? So we set the, the limit at three and a half percent that that's the highest that we can increase a, a budget for this year?
Correct.
How is that number? Can you just help me understand how that number is, that comes about?
Sure. So that's, that all has to do with Act One. So Act One has a, a amount of money that we can raise our taxes every year and it's percentage of millage rate. So we look at the millage rate from last year, the most that we can raise our taxes is 3.5%. So it's 3.5% of last year's millage rate. The problem is, is when you equalize mills between the two counties, one will max out at the 3.5% before the other county ever maxes out. So Lehigh County, we'll, we can max out the 3.5, but Lehigh County will be seeing less than a 2% increase if we would max to 3.5.
I believe North Hampton County will see less than a 3.5.
Sorry.
Sure.
North Hampton County, correct. Sorry about that.
And, and back to, back to my question then, what would our, uh, what would the figure be for next year then, if we have a zero?
What would our index be for next year if we did a zero this year?
Well, next year, Gary, I mean, I can't tell you that till we will build next year's budget because you've got all kinds of things like a teacher's contract coming up and everything else. So once, we would have to build all those new increases in there to see what all those new expenditures are going to be moving forward in order to determine exactly where, I mean, you're going to be behind, I mean, having to catch up. Um, but yeah.
You, yeah, so okay. But I think that was what I was asking if, okay, thank you. Anyone else?
But, but the- I think that's a little bit where I was going Sheri, where I, you know, I'm, I think it's really great that we go in with a zero percent this year. I think it's, it's important that we are community driven and, and it's important this year. My concern by doing that is that some of our residents, no matter what, are still going to get an increase this year, even if we go at a zero percent. And then next year, even though we may be putting money back into the budget, we're already starting behind next year, which it, it's an always a, a, a what-if scenario. So woulda, coulda, shoulda. So what if we don't put a million dollars in this year or back this year? What if we don't put a million dollars back next year? You know, what if the pandemic happens again and we have to do something else? What if our school, our teachers and our administration and our staff renegotiate contracts because they're all coming due in the next year or two? That if we're not thinking ahead, we may be hurting our community down the line in a year or two or three with even a higher, more devastating increase than we are today if we don't increase it a little. I'm not saying a three and a half percent, I'm against a three and a half percent, but I'm, I'm sure that I'm on for a zero percent just yet with the, with the numbers that you're sharing.
I just, I just want to point out that the 3.5% doesn't really have anything to do with our budget dilemmas or how well we're doing or how well we're not doing. I believe that's a, a number that's set by the state. And, uh, next year it might be 2%. Next year it might be 4%. And I think as Sheri said, we don't know what that number's going to be yet, but it's not a number that we as a district have much control over regardless of what we do, as I understand, uh, the Act One index.
And, and Matt, you are correct with that, but if all of COVID-19, COVID-19 plays a fact in this and next year it comes in that we can't raise more than 2%, then we can't even raise high enough that we can raise it to this year. So each year, if that, if that Act One index goes down, it's less money that we can actually gain through, through revenue increases.
Uh, yeah, this, this is Gary, too. You know, one, one of the things, sitting on the, uh, LCTI board, uh, and listening to the nine school districts people speaking, uh, this year's bad. Every one of them has, has made the statement openly that next year is going to be worse. So we really, you know, to hypothetically to say we're going to get things and we're, and we just may not, um, none of us know that answer and I don't know that answer, but I just need to say that I, I do know that the other districts are definitely looking at this year being bad and next year being worse. Any other comments? Any other comments? Seeing none, I will call for the question and ask for a roll call.
Roll call. Gail Husak? No. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
No.
Ms. Culp?
No.
Ms. Martnow?
No.
Mr. Disler?
No.
Mr. Disler wrote a no. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorcha?
No.
Motion does not pass, Mr. Fedorcha.
Thank you. Um, going back to Mr. Link, you did say Mr. Disler brought in a motion, but it was right after. Does Mr. Disler want to continue or does anyone else? I will, I will go to him first, but if not, if anyone else would have a motion. Uh, Mr. Disler? Okay. Am I not getting anything from him?
I believe Mr. Disler may be typing into the chat. Um, Mr. Disler, can you just affirm whether you want to still recommend a 2.5% increase? Uh, he says yes, his motion stays. So he's saying to accept the first three recommendations, which the board has supported thus far, and then a 2.5% increase.
Okay, thank you. Do I, do I have a second?
This is Donna Culp, second.
Now we'll go back to discussion on a 2.5. Anyone have any comments or questions? Anyone?
Sheri or whoever's controlling the slides, can you just, there it is. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll give you a minute to look at that again. And anyone have any more questions? Seeing no questions, I will then call for a roll call.
I'm first.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
No.
Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Ms. Martnow?
No.
Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler said yes. Mr. Green?
No.
Ms. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Husak? No. Mr. Fedorcha?
I see we have five votes, no. That does, uh, means it failed?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Do I have another motion?
Bob Kern, I'll make a motion for a 2% increase.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Donna Culp, second.
I do have a second. Again, any questions? Any questions? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Ms. Martnow?
Yes.
Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler said yes. Mr. Green?
No.
Ms. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Husak? Yes. Mr. Fedorcha?
I see we have five votes. We have six really. Uh, I vote yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Um, thank you, board. I, I know this was a very difficult, difficult task for all of us and I, I know none of us really wanted to see much happening. Um, I, I do want to thank all you, all of you for considering this for the past time. I know myself and I, or many of you have agonized over this vote. Um, in case it ever goes to the newspaper, I just want to make one comment myself, and that is that, uh, all the votes that we do as a board, we do for the best betterment of our district, of our kids and our community. And one of the comments that I've been receiving most of all, and I know other board members have, just to clear the air totally, board members are not paid. We get nothing, no reimbursement whatsoever for our time. It does cost us money if taxes go up, just like anyone else, but I just need to clear that up to our, our public that we, we are not paid. We're here volunteering to do the betterment because we care about our kids and our community. And I hope I'm speaking for all board members. Thank you and thank you, board. Okay. If I can pull up my agenda, give me a second and we'll move on. Um, Mrs., yeah, I'm sorry. Sheri, Smoltores, now I would ask you to, uh, give us the, uh, the figures to put into the full motion?
Correct. So Lehigh County millage rate of, hold on. And then the next blank would be point 0230944. And then the North Hampton County millage rate will be 65.4917. Point 0654917.
Just in case some people do not have a, a pen handy, do you want to give those things just one more time quickly, please?
Sure. Point 0230944 is Lehigh County and North Hampton County is 65.4917.
Okay. Okay, and that's a 2%.
Mrs. Smoltores, you have the quay two as written in the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Per hundred dollars of assessed value. Yeah, hold on.
We, we still have two more blanks to fill in, Mr. Fedorcha.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to ask, like, okay, yes.
Uh, 23.0944. It would be 2.309. And the other one would be 6.549.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody get that? Any questions? I'm going to need a, a motion to approve those numbers based on the 2%. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve?
Um, it's Donna Culp. Robin had said yes, I'll second it.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't look at, I'm sorry. Okay, it's moved and second. Any questions on those figures? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Sorry, Ms., uh, Ms. Culp?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Martnow?
Yes.
Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler said yes. Mr. Green?
No.
Ms. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Husak? Yes. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorcha?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on with the, those, I will need a motion to approve B. Um, which is basically, uh, the Homestead Farm Act. And, Miss Smoltores, do you want to give us the figures based on the, and that, and then I will accept the motion?
Yes, I will, Mr. Fedorcha. So you can go down to number three. The first blank that says an additional aggregated amount would be $17,004.78. The next line, it says applicable to approximately 3,405, 405 homesteads and farmstead properties. The next one would be available for an additional homestead and farmstead amount of $5.01. And the last line there, the homestead and to each approved farmstead is a total of
Okay.
And then in paragraph four, the first line will be reduction amount of $271.27. At the end of that line, you're going to have the millage rate of 23.0944 mills. And in parentheses then on the next line would be point 0230944, and that's for Lehigh County. And then the next line would be 65.4917 mills. In parentheses will be point 0654917, and that's for North Hampton County. The next line underneath that starts with homestead exclusions for approved homestead in Lehigh County is $11,745. And the next line underneath that is 4142, so $4,142 for North Hampton County. The last line underneath number four is for approved farmstead is 27124 for Lehigh County and 27127 for North Hampton County. And then in number five, the first blank, it says assessed value reduction of $11,745 for Lehigh County. The next line is 41, $4,142 for North Hampton County. Go down a few lines. It's going to start with paragraph four, the maximum real estate assessed value reduction of $11,745 for Lehigh County. Next line or 41- Next line, or 4142 for Northampton County. And that completes all the blanks.
If anyone wants those repeated? Okay.
Just a clarification, Gary, the actual dollar and cent home stud reduction, Sheri, is $271.24, is that right?
It's 24 cents for Lehigh County, it's 27 cents for Northampton County.
27124 and 27127, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And anyone else? Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the exclusion resolution. Anyone?
Some move, Bob Kern.
I'm sorry? Do I have a second?
Mac Green, I'll second.
It's been moved to second, any questions, comments? Roll call please, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Mart now?
Yes.
Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler said yes. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Husak, yes. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorcha?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone. Is there any other business to be discussed? I will, you, Mr. Hill, recognition of guest, do we have anyone who has made any comments for us to hear?
We do not have any comments, no.
Okay, then I will look to our adjournment, but before we do that, I, as always, want to thank the board again for all you've done, and for all the time you've put onto all of the items that we have to discuss. And stay healthy, stay well, and just so you know, that as the administration gets ready to prepare a program for us to look at to open school in August, we cannot wait until August to approve that. As I said a month or two ago, that this may be a unique year, and we may have to be calling, and not may, we probably will be calling a July meeting. Date has not been really set yet, I will meet with Mr. Link as to when we can approve that plan, and then I will call that meeting. But again, it has to be done prior to August, because we have to be ready in August, so we can't wait that long. So just so you know, and if you're going to have any problems with your calendars, we'll try to work around all that. I'm assuming we'll still be in the virtual state, unless something comes up, as Mr. Green had said, that they're looking at something differently at the community college. I have not heard that, it may change things, but I'm not sure where we will be and what we'll be doing, but we probably, again, will be having a July meeting. And I thank you, and I, unless anyone has any other comments, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Anyone?
Some move, Gail Husak.
Michelle Mart now, second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call motion.
I don't think we need a roll call to adjourn. We'll do a roll call, go ahead, Gail, one more time.
Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler said yes. Mr. Green?
I forgot to roll call, though.
Ms. Heckman? Ms. Husak, yes. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Keegan, Mr. Kern said yes, sorry. Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Ms. Mart now?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorcha?
Yes, and thank you again, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, School Board, have a good evening.
Good night.
Stay safe, everyone.